Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Roy.
Here.
Councilor Scott.
Here.
Councilor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Here.
Councilor Getchea.
Here.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Eleven present.
Good evening, everyone. I also like to welcome our Councilor-elect John Dakota, who is here in the chamber this evening. Congratulations, John. We look forward to working with you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting here tonight in the chamber and thank you all for watching us from home. Before we go through to the mayor's business, do we have any memorials or moment of silence this evening? Here none, we now start with the mayor's business.
Your Honor, I have one, but my computer went down, so can you just give me a minute to look it back up, find it?
Absolutely, we can come back and just keep on going on the agenda. When you're ready, just wish your hand, and we'll come back to the moment of silence. Mayor's business need a motion to, for communication remote and zoom participation by Councilor Yem, second by Councilor Scott, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next line item is City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of City Council meeting, December 12th, for acceptance. If there are no comments or questions, motion except by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Leahy, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We do have a few items for public hearing, which we will take on at 7:00. We do have time right now, so we will go to the next item on the agenda after the public hearing, which will come back at 7:00.
Mr. Mayor, could I have a point of personal privilege, please?
Councilor Getchea.
Thank you. Over the last two meetings, many motions have been tabled or laid on the table as outlined in Robert's Rules. Lay on the table, or as we have seen it used, table something, is outlined in Robert's Rules to be used to interpret, I mean to interrupt, the pending business so as to permit doing something else immediately. Nothing has been done immediately, in fact, no reason has been outlined on why we are tabling something. Over the last two meetings, to table something has been used to censor a member of this body. To definition of censor, express severe disapproval of someone. From Robert's Rules latest edition, which I purchased last week because I just have a hard time watching, as the minority of any city or town is not having a voice. Under Robert's Rules, the most misused act is to table something based on anything but immediate urgency. To lay the pending question aside temporarily when something else of immediate urgency needs to be addressed before consideration of the pending question is resumed in such a way that there is no set time for taking the urgent matter up again. Such action violates the rights of the minority and individual members if it is for any other purpose than the one stated in the first sentence. In ordinary assemblies, the motion to table is not in order if the evident intent is to kill or avoid dealing with a measure. It is clear the reason this council is tabling only one member's motion is censorship and is in violation of any member of this board, resident, or the general public. If at any time we want to table something, take racism as a public health crisis, if this board had the majority, they could have tabled that? That's not what tabling is for. People should be heard. I am very concerned when any government body takes it upon itself to remove the voices of the minority. I have been in the minority many times on many motions and don't want this practice of the majority dictating what can and can't be before this council. If any member wants to postpone any motion indefinitely, they have the right to do that, either after discussion of the motion, or they can not second a motion. My fear is that by censoring any member this way, a member of the public can seek lawsuits against the city in their case law where a sitting member of a city's council was censored and the counselor won thousands of dollars from that city. Mr. Mayor, through you to the city solicitor, can table and items be used to censor a member of this council as it has been used over the last two meetings without any immediate urgency or without any other need?
Room Mr. Manager to the solicitor.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Councilor Drinkwater.
The member is speaking on a point of personal privilege, which I don't believe allows the member to question a member of the city manager's team.
I believe it does, according to Robert's Rules.
Thank you, Councilor Drinkwater. I understand the rule. I was going to suggest to Councilor Getchea that I could ask the question after he completes his personal point of privilege, but to save time, and we're going to address the issues anyway, I will allow it, I will have the solicitor answer that question. But it is not meant, just to remind you, Councilor Getchea, personal privilege, it's not a debate, it's not going back and forth in discussion.
In Robert's Rules, you have the right to ask the question, Mr. Mayor.
You have the right to ask the question, not necessarily that any member of the administration have to answer, but at this point, I will have the solicitor answer.
Then you are the one who runs the meeting. You would need to answer that question. So, Mr. Mayor, is it the right for someone to table something for censorship reasons? It's a patent that's being shown, and you're the mayor, you're supposed to be the one running the meeting under tabling. So tabling is for immediate urgency to bring something else up. Nothing else has been brought up. So that's all I'm saying to you is, my fear, Mr. Mayor, is a simple thing. It's not about anything that's at hand currently, it's about the future. If anybody on this table has the majority, then they can censor anybody by tabling things. That's not what it was, and the patent is being shown on every single motion by one person we're tabling. And that's what I'm asking you, is you're the person, I was giving you the out by going to the city solicitor, but you're the person who should understand Robert's Rules.
You really don't need to give me an out, and I will answer your question. Tabling a motion does not mean censoring a person from speaking, censoring anybody. Tabling the motion means it's not debatable, it's tabled to a future time.
That's not true. That's not what Robert's Rules says. Do you want me to read it again to you?
You don't have to, you're in my meeting, so I'm going to ask the solicitor, it might have a legal implication.
Well, before the motions get going, I'm just trying to protect this city from lawsuits.
And that's why I'm going to turn to the solicitor.
You can't repetitively go after people's motions and table them, and that's what I'm saying.
You have a request to me, is that correct?
Excuse me?
You have a request to me, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm waiting for the answer.
And I am trying to respond to you through the solicitor, uh, city solicitor. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Councilor, could you just please repeat the question again?
What is the purpose to table something?
The purpose of tabling a motion? Typically, the reason to table a motion is there is something that is urgent, that needs to be addressed at that very moment. That is, you know, by definition, that is why you would lay a motion on the table.
So over the last few weeks, we've tabled stuff, and there has nothing pressing that has been urgent, stated, or acted on by this body. And all I'm saying to you is, if you wanted to do this, you have the right to postpone after the motion gets a second, and you can postpone indefinitely. This body has the right to do that. But when you start into this, and you start saying we're going to table everybody's motion, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor, does that meet urgency under your definition in the moment? And what is the urgent matter that goes on? When you have all, I'm trying to protect the city from lawsuits, and we're going after one person, one person's motions, and we're stopping the public from registering to speak or even hearing the body's wishes? The minority of the body? We have the right to hear that.
I will ask the solicitor.
And I'm asking through you to the solicitor.
Of course, and I will ask the solicitor to respond, and also to add on that point. Last tabling a motion is to lay it on the table. Does it any way, shape, or form means it censoring anyone or anything, Mr. Solicitor? Does it mean censoring?
I'm not sure how to exactly answer that question, but I think the answer would be no. Are you referencing it in an official censure or an unofficial censure? Either way, that is, that is not what laying a motion on the table is for. And, Councilor, to answer your question about the motions that were laid on the table in the previous meetings, no one made any request of the person who made that motion to lay on the table to describe why they were doing it. That didn't have to happen, but the other councils certainly would have had the right to do that at that time.
We can agree to disagree. You can't have any discussion during, when something is tabled. So there is no discussion that can happen. So we can agree to disagree on what you're saying, you can't even point to, unless it's already done, to a point of order. A point of order is not, is not in the hierarchy of lay it on the table. Lay it on the table means all discussion is finalized and it is brought forth. It could have been asked afterwards, certainly, but that's not the process.
When, when someone makes a motion to lay on the table, you're absolutely right, it is not debatable, but at that point, any of the councils can, can request of the chair to have the maker of that motion state very briefly and succinctly the reason for why it is being laid on the table.
That is not what Robert's Rules says, but I will agree to disagree again. And what I'm saying to you is...
And if, before you continue, Councilor Getchea, I would ask you to complete your personal point of privilege.
I have 10 minutes to speak on the...
I'm allowing you, if you let me, allowed to finish, I'm allowed to finish your personal point of privilege moment, but I will not allow any more question to any member of the administration.
I don't know that you have the authority to do that. Again, you don't dictate here, you run a meeting for us, and that's what your job is.
And that, and that is correct.
And you don't have a right to say to me, I don't have a right as a sitting, sitting councillor to ask anybody any question. They may not want to answer it, and that would be up to the city solicitor to say that, and that's why I go through you. But again, Mr. Mayor, the whole process, I have a problem with going forward. It's not about the issue with one member, it's about a bigger picture than all of us here. If we start laying things on the table all the time, or tabling things, when we feel as though we have the majority, we are not representing the minority in the city, and that's our job. And our job in censorship, we have nothing in the rules, we all understand that. There's nothing in the rules. And that's why I asked from the very beginning, we should have had an executive session to do this stuff, but we don't want to do that. We want to, you know, do this publicly. And again, I think we're putting this city in a very, very dangerous spot because that is not what the use is for tabling something. It has to have an immediate need, and after every time you do it tonight, I will ask for a point of order, and I will ask what the immediate need is. Thank you for your time.
Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not actually taking a point of personal privilege, but I'd like to just say a few words before we get into the motions, because that's where we're about to go. And, and if you don't mind, I'd like to just talk about the fact that Counselor Getchea was talking about tabling something. I just want to express my opinion in this particular matter, and I'm doing it at this time because in light of the new development, such as what I heard on WCAP this afternoon, the charges against the accused from the victim, who, and I quote, said, "He is innocent of what he is accused of as stated by the victim." Having said that, so before we, I'm just asking, before we table the motions of our colleague, I always felt that you're innocent until proven guilty, and we've never come to that point yet. And I don't want to reiterate what I said before, but in view of what we just, what I just stated, which I heard on the radio, I feel if we could just let the colleague talk about his three motions when the time comes, I find it very confusing when my colleague is, his motion's a table, but yet he can talk about anybody else's motion? That doesn't make sense to me. He can talk about everybody else's, but he can't talk about his own? He's not making a statement that isn't relevant to those that he represents until such time that he goes to court. And that hasn't happened yet, and it isn't because I favor this particular colleague. What I am saying for him is what I would say for every single member on this council that was, I felt treated unfairly before time came that they were found either innocent, not guilty or guilty. And that, and that's what I'm saying. So I would just ask if we could take a roll call on allowing his motions to be heard? That's all I'm asking.
You want to make that motion?
Yes, yes, I would.
Is that motion by Councilor Mercier? Does that have the motion by Councilor Robinson, the current floor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order. The motions that are on, there are motions placed on the agenda. As of right now, there's nothing to suggest that these motions won't be heard. This is a speculative motion that I believe is out of order.
Well, then I'll withdraw it, and we'll wait and see when the time comes if they table them again, because I think in view of the fact of what we just heard this evening, I think they should be heard. That's my comment, thank you.
The motion by Councilor Mercier has been withdrawn. We are close to 7:00 for the public hearing, but we do have a few minutes to take maybe a couple of motions. We'll start with motion, Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask to move motion number 5.5 out of order because we have a number of speakers who are here to speak, so we can allow them to speak, so they can move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Yem to take item 5.5 out of order, second by Counselor Scott. Motion 5.5, Counselor Yem requests city manager, high property department, draft a comprehensive language access plan for the city flow that includes access to a language line for city departments, as well as sustainable funding for city departments to be able to translate materials and commit to hiring multilingual staff, second by, also by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilor, city manager, and fellow resident of city of Lo. My name is Tara Hong, I live in District 6, at 22 Canton Street. I'm here tonight, today, to support motion 5.5 by Counselor Yem. This is an important, important topic that I would like to ask the city to take a look into more seriously. Lo is a diverse community that thrive on reach, the rich of cultures and languages that shape its identity. However, we must acknowledge that different culture and languages can create barrier to accessing essential city service for some resident. Motion 5.5 is not a suggestion, it's a necessary step toward fostering inclusivity and ensuring equitable access for all. This proposal, including establishing a language line for the city department, an important initiative to break down language barrier that connect and connect our resident with the system they need from the city. Regardless of the language they speak, including Khmer, Spanish, and Portuguese, I know that the city manager administration and the city council have been trying, but I want to urge the city to do more to make it happen. I believe that we can do it. Nonprofit have been doing it for years, now is your turn to make it the communication from the city, city government accessible, transparent, and inclusive for everyone. Thank you.
I'm sorry, somebody is speaking on your behalf, Mr. Shimrom?
If I may, if I, we have a resident here who does not speak English, I'd like her to go first, at 4:00, so I can help make some...
Okay, that'd be acceptable.
She already, which is also right.
Okay, please welcome.
I'm just gonna, in quick summary of what Ms. Nerito mentioned, essentially, she's speaking in support of Counselor Yem's 5.5's motion, and she encourages the city to help provide language support, as such as was mentioned by the previous speaker also. She, so if you see a number of folks here, this is their first time in, actually, in the city hall. And so they were nervous and excited at the same time, so, and I won't say more, but essentially, she wanted to see that there was, we talk about the language line, we talk about, for example, her experience and experience among her friends, because they do not speak the language or speak enough, they are afraid to come, and, and there are so many services that the city provides that folks like her can take advantage of or utilize if there are more language support. So, onto mine.
We'll reset the clock for you, so you have 3 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, members of the city council, city manager Golden, and everyone here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sophia Timruam, I'm the executive director at the Cambodian Mutual Assistant I'm trying to help the Khmer. I'm trying to help the Khmer.
I'm just quickly, I'm just gonna, in quick summary of what Ms. Nerito mentioned. Essentially, she's speaking in support of Councilor Yam's 5.5's motion. And she encourages the city to help provide language support, as such as was mentioned by the previous speaker also. She, so if you see a number of folks here, this is their first time in, actually, in the city hall. And so they were nervous and excited at the same time. So, and I won't say more, but essentially, she wanted to see that there was, we talk about the language line. We talk about, for example, her experience and experience among her friends because they do not speak the language or speak enough. They are afraid to come. And there are so many services that the city provides that folks like her can take advantage of or utilize if there are more language support. So, onto mine.
We'll reset the clock for you, so you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, members of the City Council, City Manager Golden, and everyone here. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sophia Chiu Rom. I'm the Executive Director at the Cambodian Mutual Assistant Association, CMAA. I'm here to support Councilor Yam's motion on language access. I want to start by speaking from my personal experience and challenges. My family arrived in the U.S. and settled in the city of Boston's Austin-Brighton neighborhood in August 1981. I was, as a refugee, I was a young teen then. Our family included my maternal grandparents, two aunts, and my mom. Back then, it was hard adjusting to my new country. We spoke very little to non-English. My mom spoke some French, so it was a little easier for her to learn English language than her peers. Still, it was a major challenge to get language support, to navigate the services that we needed. Fast forward to 2023. Having worked in the community for almost 30 years, I'm trying not to date myself, I have seen challenges and hardships faced by all newcomers, be that Cambodians, Africans, Middle Easterners, speakers of Spanish or Portuguese, and others in seeking language assistance to understand from such as a simple, how you gonna pay bills and, or pay tickets, to navigate and accessing other city services when they have limited English-speaking skills. That is why I am asking council members to support Councilor Yam's motion to develop a comprehensive language access plan. I want to address a couple of points. The reliance on Google Translate and copy and paste is ineffective and inaccurate in most cases, especially in Khmer. Additionally, once translated, simply just copy and paste is a dangerous proposition in missing characters, et cetera. Attention to formatting is very important. Working with a known, good translation provider of a particular language is equally important. Not all language service providers are equal. I also wanted to point out that simply hiring a multilingual staff does not provide equitable language access. I can speak from previous job experiences. I often got pulled into interpretation support. And I'm sure, and I was, those other staff are more than willing to support in any way they can. But not all of us are able to appropriately and precisely interpret or translate. Hence, the translation may not be appropriate for whatever the issue may be.
Mr. Chiu Rom, spend over three minutes if you could wrap up your speech.
All right. It is, well, I sincerely hope that the language access plan, including funding to hire professional translators and interpreters, will come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Councilor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the speaker who came, came out to show support. This motion was, you know, approached by the residents in a district who does not speak English and would like to have the city have a comprehensive plan to access, to have the access line for translation for all the department in the city, but also have a budget that will continue, a sustainable budget, to support this, this effort of having various staff hired to, to work in the city hall. Councilor Mercier and Councilor Noon have previously filed the motion, similar motion, and this council have passed unanimously to have a language access line. Particularly, Councilor Mercier talked about the police department. When someone went there, there's no other person that speaks the language of the victim. So Councilor Mercier have, have spoke eloquently about the need for this language access line. This motion is to enhance what both councilors have previously and this council have voted to have the access line, the language access line for all the department, to further have a more comprehensive and submit a budget that will sustain the goal to continue this kind of services to the, to the, to the community. So I appreciate this opportunity for presenting this motion and to the support of the entire bodies of the council and the managers. Thank you to the speaker again to come out. And this is their first time. And it, you know, this is your city. You can come and speak anytime of any issue that related to you. Thank you again.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, thank you to all the speakers who's here tonight. This and ongoing issues. I know the managers and his administrations has trying to do their best. I think there's more to be done on this area. I know that I reached out to the managers. As I seen on Facebook, a number of translations that was similar to what the directors of CMAA have stated. Cut and paste and put it in there. It's not serving the community, and it make the city look bad. It make all of us here at the council who are Cambodian American look bad. I think Long Beach have done more in terms of the comprehensive part of it is that they have the major language in this, in their city. They have a language department. I don't know where we are, where we heading, but looking at this comprehensive approach, maybe at some point we said, maybe we do need it for, at least for the major language that speak in our city here. Pulling someone off the street, either a police officer or firefighter to help translate it, you know, in case of criminal case or civil cases, it's not, it's a no-no because not anyone and everyone can do it professionally, professionally or professionally or precisely as directors of CMAA, Sophia Chiu Rom stated. I think this is an issue that we need to look at and going forward, do a better job at it. I know that, again, like I said, the city and the administration have trying, but there's more room to be, you know, complete here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Councilor Yam for bringing this motion forward. And thank you to everyone who came down to speak tonight. I think this is an important step and something we need to work on here. And a cert, city is diverse as Lohol. Over 40% of our residents speak a language other than English at home. So to be welcoming to all of our community in city hall and across city government, I think is very important. And I think that this was something we've brought up before with the idea of having a centralized communications department within the city, to be able to have these resources available for all city employees to be able to use, utilize, and be able to access. I still think that that's the way to go. And I know we've taken a step in that direction by hiring Ms. Silk. She's doing a great job. And I hope that we'll continue to see the communications department grow to meet these and other goals. I think it dovetails nicely with our DEI goals that we've talked about and how to, how to be more inclusive city. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction, and I hope we can, we can see some motion on this. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to say to the young ladies that took courage to come here this evening, thank you so much. I hope you felt welcome here. Let me just tell you about this building, this chamber. It's not just ours because we sit here. This building, this chamber belongs to everyone. So you're more than welcome to come up again in the future. Whenever you have a problem or concern, it's for you to come and tell us, or we won't know. But this particular issue, this motion, is very, very important. There are so many languages out there. And there's this device that you could just press a button, and it'll interpret to whatever language you want. So it's a very, very important. So thank you, ladies, for braving your way down here today. It was a pleasure to meet each and every one of you. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas. Suicide day to chum to may. That's all I know. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Councilor Kishia?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, does 311 have the capabilities of multi-language is within it? Do you know?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. 311, we will be discussing that. But if I could, counselor, I would have to check in on the 311 piece. But first and foremost, I want to say welcome to the folks that are here. And you should always feel welcomed. And Sophia, thank you very much for, for bringing people here. And as, I am not going to try to mimic Counselor Mercier. She did a fine job. But first and foremost, really, in speaking about this, this entire council throughout the last year and a half has talked about this. And you are right, we've made some changes. We've made some changes throughout all the departments. And Google Translate in Khmer does present a problem. It seems to be okay in other languages, but not in this situation. But I do want to say that per this council and per this administration, we are moving in the right direction. And I think that, counselor, this is another great piece to continue to add on to what other councilors have been talking about. We have started to translate all of our documents and announcements, especially, in Khmer, Spanish, and Portuguese. And that's been happening right out of our communications department. But yet, that's not good enough. Google Translate isn't good enough. We do have multilingual staff. And once again, that's not good enough. So I know that right now, we are in the process, and this was just signed, I believe it was last week, in regards to the wayfinding, which when you come into city hall and other departments, wayfinding is going to be there, and it's going to have over 90 languages to help people navigate their way through the, the city. Now, once again, probably isn't enough, right? We need to continue to get better. But I just want to continue to, to thank the council because we are moving in this direction. We are taking DEI with the inclusivity very, very seriously. We are trying to make sure that everybody feels welcomed. And I hope you felt welcomed this evening. So with what the counselor is discussing, we are moving in this direction. But to not have that opportunity to talk about the wayfinding piece, which once again is going to go over with 90 languages, and have that opportunity. But we're still going to be running into a problem when the person gets to, let's say, the desk, when you go to, go into an office. Over at the police department, I know that we do have the, the emergency line that is called, that, the language line. And that is something that we will be looking to have here. Our own greeters, they're, they're working through Google Translate, and we will get better. But ladies and gentlemen, this is your government. This is your city. And these councilors have asked for this, and we're going to continue to do that. So making you feel welcomed, making sure that everybody can get their work done here in city hall is important to this administration and is important to this council. But I don't want you to think we're going to rest on this. I think we have made some great strides, and we'll continue to make those. So I thank all of the people for being here. I want to wish folks happy holidays and to the council. We will continue to do what you've been, what you've been asking of us. And, you know, especially with this wayfinding, I think that's going to make another, another big dent or another big ability to help people navigate through our, through our system. So I just wanted to say that. Counselor, in regards to 311, we will have something coming up in the first quarter of 2024. I'm pretty sure that it is a language. It'll be able to bounce back and forth in different languages. But I just want to make sure that I speak to Mr. Fernandez. But I'm, I'm pretty confident that that will be happening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councilor Kishia, Councilor Yam, do you have something to add?
Yes, if I, if I just may quickly summarize what the manager said to the speaker who, who are here today. I'm trying to remember. 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 One, I also want to add that when we have the translation material go and also bidding it by a, a large entity who then subcontract the translation to a various translators. And some of those translations are not good enough. For example, some of the material that the state translate, it does not work really well because whoever did the translation may not be influenced in Khmer or maybe come from a different region in Cambodia that speak differently. So my suggestion would be that any material, I would like CMAA to be the point person also, and then ask the city to maybe work and help CMAA to be the state vendors, approved vendors, so they can also get support, finance support to hire staff that the city can turn to to verify all translation before it go out. That's just my last comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And may.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. There's a, we have used CMAA. And I think that other folks have used CMAA at our request when they're looking for it because it, we've, we've found it to be very successful. I'd have to talk on the state side. I can't speak to that counselor at this time. But I also want to let people know, the one piece of this that I did not bring up, and this is probably one of the most vital pieces, is that patrol operations and Lohol Police Department right now, on patrol, that they have access to the language line as well. So if people, you know, find themselves in a situation that they need to talk to a police officer for any reason at all, they do have access to that language line that is out on, on a call. And Sophia, if you could help us make sure people know that. That is probably, when, when people have an issue or something is going on. I mean, here, I think sometimes we look at it as, okay, I've done it myself. Who needs to, you know, who can, we get to help you to pay a bill or, or get a birth certificate or whatever the case may be. We always kind of get our way through it. But in that time, when our professionals in the Lohol Police Department are out there, they do have access to that, that language line for, for folks to talk to the language line, and then they'll be able to talk to the officer, just for everyone's identification. Thank you.
And you said, did, Mr. Clerk, was there any other speaker registered for this motion?
There's no more registered speaker.
No more registered speaker. Any other comments or questions by the counselor? Did you register to speak on this motion as well? The motion by Councilor Scott to allow the person to speak? Second by Councilor Yam?
Good evening, everyone, city councilors and local community. My name is Luciano Paskevisios, and I am a family advocate, Lowell Alliance. And I've been asked to read this letter, which was pretty much in the line of what Yan just said. I just like to add, I'm not going to read the letter. What's a government without this capability of communicating and reaching out? It's pretty much nothing, right? We do what we do to serve people and to reach out and to make sure that everyone has access to the same services. I'm speaking a little bit of my behalf as a resident, as an immigrant. And I also speaking in the name of our coalition, Lowell, Lowell Votes. This is the first time also addressing you folks, so I'm a little nervous. But some of the translations that went out during the elections were made by our coalition, specifically by me. And even though I love doing that work, I also think that the city can do a little bit better, can be, you know, reaching out. Some of the work that I do is knocking on doors and neighborhoods that nobody seems to care about. Some places look like they've been forgotten by this same government, local government. And specifically, I'd like to mention that if we are going to attack this issue of not being able to communicate with everybody, I would start with the elections office. It's very important that we communicate issues, everything related to voting, voting rights, accessibility, locations, timeframes, and all. to voting, voting rights, accessibility, locations, timeframes, and also what the candidates do, and they don't do, or what they stand for. Again, pretty much everything that I said is being said already. I just want to back up councillor Yum and everybody else that's in favor of this. Lowell Votes will be, it's interested, it will be, we'll continue to work with the city. If you feel like there's a need for you to translate documents, we will do that for you guys. But we'll also ask you to come up with a more sustainable, more serious, you know, way to attack the problem of communicating with people, because as has been said, almost 50% of the population in Lowell speaks other language than English. And if I were to speak another language, that is not the language that we all agreed to speak today, since there's not-
It's a bit over three minutes, if you could wrap up your speech?
Thank you, mayor. Since there's not an official language, I'm entitled to speak whatever language I want, and I'm, I would like to assume that you will be making a big effort to try to understand what I'm saying. It's the same effort that I'm doing right now, to try to understand what all of you are saying. So let's, let's work on this. Let's include all the stakeholders, not just CMAA, but Lowell Alliance, CBA, and so many other people that are working with people that we know are there, out there. You know, if you actually go out there, you walk a few blocks, you'll see that the people that are out there looks a lot less than this, and more like this. So language, accessibility, and equity is very important. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. Have a good night.
On this motion, a different motion, we have not, that motion's not up yet. No other comments or questions on this motion, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. We now pass seven o'clock, we are taking up the public hearing at seven o'clock. We'll start with 4.1, the National Grid requests installation of upgraded underground conduit on McIntyre Street at Muddisack Street. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. Seeing no hands, that portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Seeing no hands, that portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Need a motion to refer to the white inspector for report and recommendation by councillor Nuen, second by councillor Gitchia, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next item for public hearings is 4.2, National Grid requests installation of a new pole and secondary conductor on West Ford Street. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. Hear none, that portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Seeing no hands, that portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hear none. Need a motion to refer to the white inspector for report recommendation by councillor Janess, second by councillor Leahy, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next item for public hearing is 4.3, Boston Gas DPA National Grid requests installation of a three vent post to upgrade gas pressure regulator at 20 Clark Road. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those in favor, hear none, that portion closed. Open to all those who oppose. We're now open to all those who oppose. Hear none, that portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the council members? Hear none. Need a motion to refer to white inspector for report and recommendation by councillor Gitchia, second by councillor Leahy again, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. We now go back to where we left off, and these are the city council motions. We'll go back to, the first motion is 5.1, a motion by councillor Mercier, request city manager find ways and means to create a law that reads as follows. In an effort to be environmentally and humanly safe, homeless camps must be more than 100 feet from any waterway. Do we have a second? Second by councillor Gitchia. Any register to speak on this one, Mr. Clerk? No. Councillor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is aimed at placing concern for our environment as well as our homeless population. This motion was of concern to me when I heard that a homeless individual fell asleep where he lives, near a riverbank, and he fell into the river while sleeping. This was published December 11th and broadcasted on NBC 10 Boston, where a ladder truck lifted the person out of the river below on a stretcher early on Monday morning. We also know that we always tend to see an abundance of trash near and around campsites. If the, and it seems that if they're near water, that the trash will, and the water will become one. That trash contaminates our waterways, our environment, and our environment, and we have no say on it. But if this law were made, then we could have a leg to stand on and kind of monitor that, and would be saving a life. So we'd be addressing the environmental issues as well as human rights issue, so that people would be encouraged to obey the law and move away from the water. It's only to protect them. So there's no harm with this motion. I'm just not moving people away. I'm just trying to get them away from waterways, which would be a hazard to their health when they're sleeping. So this is what this motion is all about.
Any comments or questions on this motion? Any comments, questions? Hear none, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carrying. The next motion is 5.2, councillor Gitchia, request city manager look at reevaluating the $9 million in ARPA Neighborhood Improvement Funds, and invest those funds in school HVAC systems. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Nuen, councillor Gitchia.
There's a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
If you don't mind, councillor, have the registered speaker go first. Mr. Clerk, please call-
Kendrick Del Obe.
Is the registered speaker-
That's all.
The registered speaker's not here. Councillor Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. In the motion, it says reevaluate, which doesn't mean take the total of $9 million and put it into the HVAC system, but it does mean that there may be projects that we can shift out of this, and capital plan away from it, and use some of those dollars to try to make these schools' HVAC systems better in the immediate go-around, and shift some of those projects, which may be overpriced from what we're saying, or there may be other areas where we can look at funding sources to get some of these projects done. After talking to DPD over the last few months, I know there's challenges, that numbers are coming back in high on some of these projects, and maybe we can just shift those monies to get them expended real fast, and get them into these HVAC systems, and move those projects to other places. And that's all it is. It's just about reevaluating where we are in this process, because these funds do fall under the proper way of spending it, and ARPA funding. And it may be something that we can use immediate need, and just play the shell game with the money, and try to get some of these things immediately improved. And that was the point to the whole motion. It wasn't to take somebody's project away from someone that's already in the pipeline, that's already been budgeted and bid out. So that was really, my thought process behind this was, if there was money, that you could use that way. Thank you.
Councillor Janess? Councillor Janess will go first, then councillor Robinson. Councillor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the desire to take another look at where we're spending this money. However, I do have concerns. We talk a lot about being a proactive government and not a reactive government. This feels like a reactive situation to me. We were all presented a plan. We made comments on that plan. We revised that plan. We had a new plan. We're all in favor of that plan. And now, because there are challenges in the schools, and I agree, there are challenges, and we need to find ways to address them, we're looking at redoing the plan that's already been in place for a while. The DPD has been working to put in motion. I'm sure a lot of this money has been committed or expended. I know one of the projects on this, this neighborhood improvement plan, was the ramp in Swamp Locks in District 4. That's already there. That money's already been spent. I suspect the other projects are similarly moving along. We set expectations with our residents, some of this stuff was happening, it was coming. People are excited by that. I understand, looking for ways to improve things, we all agree, there's not enough money to do everything we need to do. So I just ask that as the administration looks at this, we keep that in mind, and keep, and make sure that, you know, we get buy-in from the neighborhoods. If we're looking to change any of these projects that we've already presented, we've already gone through, that the neighborhood is on board with making these changes, and not just, you know, a reaction to move this money. I do agree with councillor Gitcher that the worst thing we could possibly do is not spend every dime of this ARPA money, or spend it in a way in which we end up having to give it back to the federal government. So that's my first concern, is to make sure we do spend this money. And if for whatever reason it makes sense to move money around so that we can do that, I'll be supportive of that. But I do want to make sure we, you know, we include the neighborhoods in this discussion, as we're making any changes to plans that we've already put in motion. Thank you.
Going to have councillor Robinson go first, who hasn't spoken yet, and then we go to councillor Gitchia. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you very much. I agree with councillor Gitcher on this somewhat. I think this is a proactive approach, because if we look at prioritizing, I agree that we've all, all districts, again, I'm glad we were able to equally disperse money for green space and open park improvements. I think it's desperately needed, but I think this is a matter of prioritizing as well. For example, the project over here in Centerville that's slated in the pipeline, that's going to be a multi-year, multi-phase project. There potentially could be some other areas that funding could come from, because CSO work is going to be taking place, amongst other things. I also think this reevaluation of the way we're going to be breaking down this money, are there other mechanisms that we could use? Because I think first and foremost, if we have a solid commitment from the administration and the team, saying that these projects are going to go forward, now it's just a matter of planning properly with our funding and budgeting. And I think we need to look at the impacts. So in a four-year, multi-phase project, something like the St. Louis Park redevelopment, it's huge. I think it's going to drastically change the quality of life for a lot of our residents, and I think it's something that's desperately needed, because it is, in a qualified sense, is track zone. But if it's spread out over four years, we can't sit idle and have the people in schools waiting for us to figure out a means to correct the heating and air conditioning and air movement for four years. So I think it's a matter of just taking a sharper look at how can we do both, and what are our priorities? I think right now, when we have human capital that is suffering as a result of, say, years of putting priorities in the schools on the back burner, it does warrant us taking a second look. But at the same time, equally as important, the improvements to open space and green space are also a priority. So I think this is going to be a delicate balancing act, that I'm sure the administration and its team can put together a solid plan. But I think, first and foremost, we need a commitment that these projects that are already slated in the pipeline are going to continue, and it might just be a matter of looking at what available funding we can also use. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify where this all comes from. Couple weeks back, we had the DPW commissioner here on an AC unit that's down at one of the schools. I have been in constant contact with DPD about lighting, and it came in high on the bid process, came in over. So there's money there, and when the DPW director stood up here and said, "I don't know where the funding source is. We're looking for the funding source," rather than, "Here's the funding, spend it, put it together, get this out the door, and then we'll worry about the other piece later," and that's where the funding source can be used from immediately. That was the only reason why. It wasn't about people's projects and us saying okay to projects or anything like that. It was giving you, and Mr. Manager, you can spend this money whatever way you want, but it's to say to you that my priority in my position is, if somebody needs air conditioning and heating, let's get it done. And if it has to come from this area, I am okay with it coming out of the district that I represent, and I'm sure the people in my district would be okay with that. I think that if you have the Dealey and the Washington, and there's those struggles, and the funding is there, and we're just pushing off ordering a piece of equipment, because we can't set the PO without having the funding source, let's set that PO, let's get the funding source. We get six to eight months by the time the piece of equipment even comes in, to figure out if we can move other pieces. That's all this was about. It wasn't about any projects or anything like that. It was more so, let's lock down these funds, let's order these pots today, because we know there's such a delay in getting them, and then figure out the rest later. Thank you.
Councillor, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate that clarification, because if anything, what I would suggest is that the wording of this motion is too narrow in highlighting one specific program within the ARPA plan. I think the city government has been very adaptive when it comes to addressing immediate needs and finding money that maybe can be reallocated. We also have a capital plan that we do every year, where we bond money to take on projects like this. There is a state program where through the state's ARPA plan, they put money aside for local HVAC projects. I would suggest that we look under many more stones before we target one specific program in the ARPA plan. There may be other things within the ARPA plan that would have money available to be reallocated. My concern here is that there was discussion within neighborhood groups that went into which projects got selected, and they are in process, and these are good projects for our neighborhoods. So I agree with the sentiment here, that these HVAC issues in schools are of an urgent need, and may require some reallocation of funds, whether that is cash to take on the immediate needs, or whether it's capital funds to plan for the future. So I think that is something that needs to be looked at, but I do have some concern here about naming one particular program within the ARPA plan to reallocate those funds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Nuen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the councillor Gitcher's motions. So it does not hurt us to reevaluate, you know, how we disperse this ARPA money, particularly to the school, the roof and the HVAC. I know that recently, the managers and his team got MSBA grants for $13 million, which is congratulations to the administration for that. And that go to do exactly that roof and, you know, the HVAC, right? So, but there's more need in our school as well. So when you don't have a, we've been to Pontucket Memorial School, you know how bad it was, or still is. To some extent, a lot of work being put into it already. The kid and the staff, the teachers, you know, don't feel comfortable, don't feel safe. Learning would not take place in any of the school. Of course, we have the capital plan, and sometimes things fall apart, you know, with or without the capital plans. I think look at ARPA money, whether that be neighborhood improvement and/or ARPA money in general to address this, you know, and to have plan in place for school, as well as the municipal building. It's important. So I'm waiting for, looking for the report from the managers on this. So I understand that councillor Gitcher's address, mentioned the neighborhood improvement. We do need neighborhood improvements as well. A lot of neighborhood been waiting for money to, you know, improve their neighborhood for a long, long, long time. So if you cannot find it there, look at ARPA funding as a whole, and see what we can do to do, what we need to do with our, the HVAC and the roof of our school. Thank you.
Councillor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to seeing the response to the motion. You know, I think to pigeonhole a distance of that $9 million could be a little bit dangerous. You know, I always see the frantic phone call from the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, you know, wondering if his $1 million has gone, that the city had just had a, you know, at an event awarded to him. So, you know, I'd just be curious, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, do you have to contact every- So, you know, I'd just be curious, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, do you have to contact every council personally to see if they want to allocate that district's million dollars or whatnot to a specific project in the school system? Obviously, there are schools that do need work done right away, but you kind of have to try to balance everything all together. So I'm looking forward to the report. You know, I think the motion is just for this time, but, you know, I think we just have to make sure that we're not Robin P. to pay Paul. Thank you.
Councilor Scott, you all set? Any other comments? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I also, I just want to be very careful on this. I wasn't going to support it tonight because I think we already came out with a plan. And I don't want to be reactive. You know, we've been dealing with this issue for a long time. We've got a number of people in place, thank you, that have a good plan on how to handle the schools. And I know we had a meeting up there last week, we heard all the concerns. There's a lot of schools that have all these different issues and we've been working on it. And again, I think we have the right staff in place now, but if we start taking, if we start going off our plan and not sticking, staying with the course, we're going to get ourselves in more trouble. So I would really caution us to, you know, if there's extra money at the end of the year, we always put it into the schools anyways, trying to fix these problems. So just be very, very careful. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any other councilors? I'd just like to make a quick comment from the podium with no objection. I too will support this motion, especially the intent of the motion and after the make of the motion, explain it. Like the other councilors mentioned, we are a little bit cautious of, you know, how it's wording, having the money that how to be committed to the neighborhood development improvements. Every neighborhood out there, they could use improvement to quality of life for our residents occur at all levels of the city, from the public space all the way to the schools and the work environment and office and everywhere. Just want to just reiterate that, you know, when we're looking for money to support projects in our city, it should not be viewed at as a competition, it should not be a zero-sum game. One area wins the other in order for the other area of the development that needed to lose. I believe the administration, I urge the administration to look for other fundings that is within the ARPA program that would fit what the make of the motion is seeking, which everyone here on a council support is to support our school, make sure it's safe, make sure it's a positive learning environment for our students. And we are fortunate to have the Director of the ARPA Program, Mr. Brendan Flynn, here to listen to all the councilors' concerns about this. So I would urge just to really look for funding, for monies within the ARPA program to make sure to improve our school system. But I would not support money that's already been committed or money that we planned that we agreed to as a council body to have neighborhood improvement as well. Those are just as important. Thank you. With that said, I'll take a voice vote. On favors, I oppose, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is 5.4, is a motion by Councilor Nunez, request, this one have a registered speaker. 5.4, Councilor Nunez, request city manager create a, are we on 5.3? Okay. That motion took a long, I skipped one. 5.3, Councilor Nunez, request city manager have property department prepare an assessment of city-owned properties that can be quickly and efficiently repurposed and added to the tax roll and identify those that cannot be redeveloped. We have a second, second by Councilor Murcia. Do we have a speak on this one, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Councilor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the idea behind this motion is that to, you know, looking for way to get more revenue through tax. In this case, it's that the city has properties, land, some of the parcel in the city, throughout the cities, that there are some that is with existing building on them and there are others who are just land. Lands, it's from 10,000 acre to 20,000 to 30,000 acre. We can't put that, either sell that to the developer, develop it and so on, that way we can put this back into the tax roll. I mean, so look at it also is that what's a neighborhood by using the GIS, you know, mapping, city mapping. Look at, you know, what's neighborhood that this property is at, whether that be building or whatnot, so that we can also identify as well in terms of what zoning they're in, whether or not is, you know, we can do it, we can sell it to developers and build more football housing, or if this is areas where it's commercial, do the same. That way, you know, we have now properties that we, that sit there and do nothing about it or have, we've been trying. I'm sure the DPD have some of those big parcel. I recall a while back, that's big parcel by the connector and also protectables that could be turned into commercial, turned into multi-unit housings and so address. Again, housing shortage, but if it's commercial areas, then address those issues as well, bring more taxes to the city. So that's the idea behind the motion.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Here none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is 5.4. Councilor Nunez, request city manager create a plan to reconstruct the Bailey School parking lot, which is in need of milling, overlay, restriping and additional spaces. Second by Councilor Getcher.
This is the registered speaker, Mr. Mayor. Via Zoom, Joe Boyle.
Is the speaker coming on Zoom, Mr. Clerk?
I see him. He's on mute, I guess.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hey.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. I'm Joseph Boyle, I live in the Highlands, about three blocks away from this site. I walked my son to this school for five years and I'm very pleased to see this motion because this is a problem that I have been observing for a long time. The condition of the parking lot at the Bailey School is far beyond normal wear and tear. There is, it's, there's been a serious problem of icing through there, which has caused considerable damage, which is a result of a groundwater problem. And I am asking the council to amend the motion to take into account the drainage and the plowing situation to make sure that we're not back here again in five years having to do another expensive paving job. The situation at this site is that groundwater is bubbling up from the base of the curb at the top of the driveway and flowing down, all the way down the driveway and all the way across the parking lot and eventually out onto the grass and then freezing and thawing. And I believe the reason why that this is happening is because when this was driveway, when the school was originally built, it was designed to have a swell, a drainage swell behind that sidewalk coming down the driveway in order to catch groundwater coming from up in the Highlands and redirect it down into a basin down on the right. But that drainage swell has since become very disrupted and pitted and instead of channeling the water, it's catching it and allowing it to soak in. And I think that is the root of the problem. And I think it's a relatively cheap fix just to regrade it and it would be, it would help to protect the city's investment. So I'm asking you to consider amending the motion to add language about the drainage swell and coming up with a plowing plan to prevent damage to it, to the swell in the future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, any other registered speaker?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was approached by staff and teachers at the Bailey School and asking that I bring it up. So I think Joe Boyle know about it more than I do because he's frequent there, you know, taking his kid to that school as well as some of those teachers and staff that work there. So if it amended to add to address the drainage swell, the manager heard it, so he's going to see what he can do to help, you know, down the road. Thank you.
Councilor, you make an amendment to your motion?
I think the manager would know what to do, Mr. Mayor.
Would be notation is okay, you don't have to.
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Notion is good, okay. Any other comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. We already have taken up motion 5.5. We now go to motion 5.6. Councilor Janas, request city manager provide detailed report to the council showing vehicle, pedestrian, vehicle bicyclists and other similar accidents over the last five years. Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Scott. Councilor Janas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw a report last week that after decades and decades of a decrease in pedestrian deaths, last year saw the highest pedestrian deaths in the country in 40 years. 750,000 people, or sorry, 7,500 people were killed by drivers in 2022. Digging a little more into the data, it seems that a large portion of this increase came during dusk, basically as the sun was setting. That seemed to be the time when pedestrians were most vulnerable. So I was curious if this pattern in the data is repeated here in Lowell. If we have that data to be able to go and look and understand where our challenges are, it might guide us in how we, how we look to address this issue and reverse this trend. Because it's really a stark picture when it was, when you look at the graph and the numbers trending down, 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 and then it jumped up last year. So I'm really curious if we're suffering the same here in Lowell. And if we are, you know, I'd like to see us put some effort into figuring out how to address it. But the first problem, first question is, you know, we need to answer is, are we having this issue? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here none, on the favors, I oppose, say no, the I's have it. Motion is carried. The next motion is 5.7.
Mr. Mayor? Can I make a motion to bundle? Motion 5.7, 5.8 and 5.9, please?
Motion by Councilor Janas to bundle 5.7, 5.8, 5.9. Do we have a second? Second by Councilor Drinkwater. I will read all these motions and even though it's bundled, people can speak on it individually. 5.7, Council Robinson, request city manager provide an update on what measures have been implemented to curb parking at intersections. 5.8, Council Robinson, request city manager have the property department explore cost of bringing in supplemental contracted street sweeping services twice annually. And the last motion to be bundled is 5.9. Council Robinson, request city manager work with property department to explore if utilizing snow blower attachments and loading trucks to remove snow in dense neighborhoods would be beneficial for winter operations. Mr. Clerk, do we have any registered speaker on any of these items?
There is one registered speaker on. On number 5.7?
Can you call the registered speaker?
Dick Maloney?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Councilor.
You speaking on 5.7?
Yes.
You have three minutes?
Yes, it's, well, pertains to that, it's, I live on Acropolis Road. And every day between 2:30 and 3:30, when the schools are getting out, there's no parking signs in front of the school, no parking signs, tow zone. And every day, I go up, I try to avoid it. Once in a while, I can't, I'm in a hurry. And the school buses are on the wrong side of the road, for one thing. The second thing, they, there's a short street right off of West Meadow and it says, "Do not enter, just wait." They all go that way, they block people's driveways, elderly people's driveways. And one day last year, I was going that way. You got to go five, you can't go 20, you got to go five. Going that way, and the principal from the school came out, I don't know, directing traffic or something. I saw some little feet coming behind the car, so I stopped. Says to me, he said, "Can't park there." I said, "Don't know kidding." I didn't use those exact words. And we're getting to it for a second. I said, "Why don't you go tell these people here with the New Hampshire plates and from all over the place, they can't park there. I don't know what they're doing. I don't know why all these people are coming to pick up kids if they get busing in this city. I have a funny feeling they're not from this city and the people with the New Hampshire plates definitely aren't from this city." And I just like, I talked to the new principal at Pawtucket a few weeks ago, nice guy, I spoke to him, he's going to do something, but they're too busy anyways to go out there and deal with the parking, you know, but I'd just like to see them go down there. One day, right around the corner, they have the, there's a soccer field, the old health camp, there's signs, they have signs there, it says, "No parking on roadway." You know where the people park? On the sidewalk, all over the place, you know? And a few years back, the school, the school, I don't know if it was a wing at Pawtucket, they removed the no parking signs. They were ripped right out of the ground because they're off by the dumpster. I saw them, walking my dog. And now they put new sidewalks in, but they have the no parking signs. The cars are going this, this way and the no parking signs are facing this way. But they know that, they're all the way up the street, you know, no parking signs. And I just like, something to done about it. If any first responders, God forbid, ever had to get near that school, they'd be screwed. They would be, it would just be pandemonium, you know? And I got a kick out of the school, it says, "Safety first" on their marquee and all this other stuff. Something's got to be done, especially with the bad weather coming, you know, icy and snowy and everything else. Just got to do something about it. I mean, they don't have to, but I'm asking you to. That's about it. I'd like to know why Senator, ah, Senator, yeah, maybe future Senator. Councilor Leahy shows up in his work clothes now, is that what he does? See you later. That's it from me.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Do you have a second on the, do we have a second on the motions, on all these three motions? Second by Councilor Murcia, before opening the floor. Any comments by the make of the motion?
First, for the record, I'd like to know through you to, what is the reason? These are bundled?
It's a motion to bundle and that was passed, Councilor.
Yeah, I'd like for the record, whoever made that motion, can I have on record, why were these three motions bundled?
I don't think we need to discuss why it's motion unless it's up to the make of the motion answer. I don't think it's necessary to discuss why a motion is made of the floor. It was second, it was passed.
Through you to the solicitor then? Do I, do I have a right to ask why a colleague made a motion to bundle my three motions specifically out of all nine that are on the agenda today?
Are you asking whether it's valid or whether, why a council member making a motion?
I'm asking through you to the solicitor. Do I have a right to request why the motion to bundle my three motions was made?
Through Mr. Manager to the solicitor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the timing to make that request would have been when the first motion to bundle them occurred. So at this point, it's already been seconded and voted on. So you wouldn't have a particular right at this point.
Okay, thank you. So motion 5.7, basically with winter coming, and we've been discussing this on the floor for quite some time, I'd like to know what, if any, implementations have been done to curb the parking because we're seeing it's still over here in Centerville, right up going up to Bridge Street, any of these small side streets. You're sticking three quarters of the way out onto Bridge Street, ongoing traffic to even see if you can pull out. And so I'm looking to see what has been done since we began these conversations.
Councilor, is this a question that you want the manager to answer right now? Is this for the report to come back if it were to pass?
No, no, that's what this, this motion is about. I'm just explaining the motion, I could wait for a motion response for the answer.
Okay. Are you all set with the motions, Councilor?
5.8. 5.8 is, was one that was discussed and with the city moving forward with the CSO plan, I wonder if this potentially could work as part of that budgeting that we're looking at for the combined sewer overflow because again, I believe wastewater would be eligible location to pull the revenue or the funding for additional street sweeping services, which would help alleviate what's going into our services, which would help alleviate what's going into our catch basins. And 5.9 is just another means, potentially looking at instead of stockpiling snow, the dense areas creating problems where people can't open the doors, especially in our business districts as well. Would it make more sense? And would it be fiscally responsible to try to take an alternative approach and remove as opposed to just stockpile? Thank you.
Counsel, are you all set with the other motion as well?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions on these motions? No comments or question? Counselor Leahy, do you have a request to roll call? Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Roll call for what?
Motion? Counsel Leahy?
I don't get it.
Counsel Mercier?
I don't know what we're roll calling. What's the, what's the reason we're roll calling?
It was a request for a roll call, Counselor, on the three bundled motions. Counsel Mercier?
Yes and no if you want the motions or if you don't agree with them.
Yes.
Counsel Noon? Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Ruck?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
No.
Counsel Yem?
No.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
No.
Counsel Getchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
No.
Six noes.
Did you skip Counsel Noon, Mr. Clerk?
I didn't skip him. I called him. Counsel Noon?
Just got here. No.
Our motions field.
That complete the section on the motions. We now move forward to Section 6, Communications from City Manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with the alphabet A.
Your Honor, did you just?
Counsel Leahy?
Can I just do that?
Point of personal privilege?
Yeah, moment of sirens, like.
A moment of silence?
They're up and running.
Okay. Do you wanna make it before we finish, before we adjourn, or do you want to do it now?
Well, I figured in the middle of the meeting by now, it's eight o'clock, so.
Okay, all right.
At least get it done so people are.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I just asked for a moment of silence for Francis E. Kelty, died peacefully at his, at his home after a long illness, December 6th, surrounded by his family. He was devoted husband of Patricia Ann Kirwin Kelty, whom they celebrated thirty-seven years of marriage. Frank was born in Boston, Massachusetts, to Thomas P. and Caroline M. Foley Kelty on May 4th, 1952. He was raised in Waltham, graduated from UMass Boston, Boston College, graduate School of Social Work. We're here in membership in the Alpha Sigma NU. He was deeply committed to his calling to help those in need, and he did so through thirty-one years, a thirty-one-year career at the Department of Children and Families. Frank was an avid Red Sox, Celtics, Patriots, but most of all, he loved to watch Little League, his Little League World Series. His thirty years as a ASU, ASA umpire, time playing in the EAA softball league, and years of coaching his daughter's softball teams brought him great joy. Frank is survived by his loving wife Patty, his children Courtney, Bridget Kelty, her partner Daniel Feldman of Boston, Patrick J. Kelty, and Corey F. Kelty of Lowell. He will be sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. And thank you all for reading again. I know the ceremony is coming up. If everyone could please stand up for a moment of silence. Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. We now will go to the motion responses. The alphabet A, the beginning of the motion responses deals with Chamsore Street and Industrial Avenue. Any comments or question, Counselor Getchia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I just want to thank Ms. Altman for the report. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. The next motion response is on Mammoth Road and Fourth Avenue. Any comment? Counselor Ruck just left the meeting. He might come back and speak on it. We now just go to C. This is on the additional crosswalks. Any comment, Counselor Scott?
I'd also just like to thank Ms. Altman for her response.
Thank you. No other comments. We now go to the next motion response. This is on the school committee traffic coming. This is a motion that's put forth by the superintendent on behalf of the school committee. I read as chairman of the school committee. It's a good report. Thank you to the manager for presentative support through the city council. No other comments or questions. We'll go to the next motion. This is on Cross Street and Suffolk Street. This is also a motion by myself, and I thank you and the city engineer to go out and look at it. It is needed for many emergency vehicles as well as large vehicles making a turn in an area. Counsel Ruck, we did go over the motion response that was in reference to Mammoth Road and Fourth Avenue. Do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you very much. Just quickly, I would like to thank Altman for the response. I think it does hit all the issues that couple of the residents that we start to be, we're concerned about. And hopefully, if we can get a plan for the future of what's actually gonna happen, that even be better. Obviously, the six accidents over the past year is concerning. And actually, these, you know, most of the comments that I received was from right after school and actually on voting day. So I think that the report is great, and hopefully gets actionally assumed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No other comments. We go to where we left off. We're at the alphabet F. This is on Chase, Maple, King, Kreisman, Saddle, Watson, and Western Avenue. Counselor Scott and Counselor Yem, any comments? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for this very detailed list. For one, I really appreciate the Western Ave. It's on the 2024 paving list. But I also noticed that it will be only, the street only, no sidewalk. Is that correct, Ms.?
What, Ms.?
Ms. Ting, is that correct? Because it say it's on the list, but then you go down further. It's a Western Ave, School Street to the N under the list that say roadway paving without sidewalk project 2024.
Through Mr. Manager to Ms. Ting?
Yes, correct. On Western Ave, we will be just doing the roadway itself. There is two different contracts that we are separate out just to get a better price. We usually try to do project with the sidewalk, which will have one certain type of contract that we'll bid on, and street that without sidewalk will have a separate contracts that have different contract to bid on. We usually get a better price in that way. So that's usually the case.
Thank you. One other question that I have would be, not a question, but comments on the 2024 roadway paving with sidewalk project. It's number 11, or number 12, Broadway, Walker Street to School Street. Broadway, Walker Street is a four-way stop, and from Walker Street to School Street, if I may ask the city and the engineer to work with the development at 733, 735 Broadway Street where the food bank is, because during the construction, that will be a lot of digging, maybe the, you know, water. It's gonna be about fifty-three housing development at the former food bank located at 733, 735 Broadway. So I would recommend that the city and an engineer coordinate it with the developer because during the construction, there will be a lot of digging for water, sewer lines and stuff like that. So I do not want to see that Broadway paved and then they dig it. So may be coordinating.
We will absolutely coordinate that. I noticed that there is already conceptual plans that came forward. So we will look at, usually when it came to planning board, we will review it. So we will coordinate at the same time.
Yes. And if I may also ask a bit further on Broadway from Walker toward the UMass Low parking lot, because that road is really beaten up until the Broadway got to, to the parking lot where the UMass Low parking lot, when we have that, with the project that UMass, the parking lot, we were there, right. And then if you can, if I may, on Walker Street going south to MFA, the Mammoth Fire Alarm, remember the manager and I, we had a walk over a year ago, and that's from that MFA. It's number, if I may, it's 176 Walker Street. So from that to the corner, if I travel from Walker Street from MFA, I would head north and come to the four-way stop where Walker and Broadway is. That portion is really, really bad also. So while we're doing that, so we could kind of look at that as well, if I may.
So I want to answer that Broadway question first. On the, the National Grid is actually is doing a geothermal project around that parking lot. That's why that block of area is not part of the project. In terms of Walker Street, there's a section of, I think that's the section you're referring to, gas company, yes, to replace that. They've been trying to replace that. When we've been working with them for years, try to get that portion of the street replaced, but they are having hard time with the railroad track area. If that's the area you're referring to.
Yes, yes, that's, that's, because on your report, number 12, say Broadway from Walker Street to School Street. So that mean we go through and pass the 733, 75, the food bank. So we work with them. But my request is that toward where the parking lot of the UMass Low, from, from the Walker Street, go toward the parking lot.
To Wilder.
Yeah, it's just like three houses. That road there is also beaten up. But then also Walker Street, south from Broadway, where MFA is, 176 Walker Street, that road section there is really beaten up. The manager and I, we went there. So that's part of the five things that I request. The manager, and we have four done, so they want one. Or done only that one that need to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three to the council. Counselor, from Walker to Wilder Street, that's where the National Grid is doing.
The geothermal projects is happening next year. That's why it's that portion.
So that's gonna have to wait. And from, on Walker Street to MFA, I'm wondering if that's the cast iron?
That's the cast iron pipes that National Grid's been trying to replace. They're waiting for permit from the railroad company.
Correct. So just edification to the, to the councilors. Sometimes there are streets, there are sections of streets that if we still have cast iron gas lines underneath them, it would be a waste for us to rehab that roadway. But at some point in time, if that were to happen, we would be able to go back under a localized, councilors, you just voted some localized dollars that went out for, I'm gonna say, probably a hundred feet in each direction. So, Counsel, that's probably where we would end up taking care of that. Most people will drive by and see it and not understand why we didn't do it all at the same time. But once again, from Walker to Wilder Street, that is the National Grid energy piece, and then the geothermal piece, and then going up Walker is a cast iron, a cast iron gas line that needs to be replaced. So we have those on our radar screen to get to number five.
Thank you for the clarification. For those who watch at home, they're gonna ask the same question, "Why you paved it nice and what about this just small section here?"
Sometimes it doesn't look great, but that's correct. Thank you, sir.
And I have the last kind of comment on the FY 24, FY 26, pavement preservation, 2024 localized paving street list. Number two, Dutton Street at Willie Street. That, if I'm coming from the new courthouse, and then I will make a left turn onto Dutton Street, where, as if I go to Dunkin' Donut. But if I'm not, I'm continue on, and it curve around, and that road turn into Willie. The gas, the gas company stays, the gas company is right there. So now, if you look at that, you will see the road is all broken up. And what happened, we have this past few days, the rain come. So the water come from the Willie Street, go down, if you're coming from Willie Street from Rock Street, you're coming down, and then it curve around, and it become Dutton Street, where Kazajin Enterprise, yes. That corner there, the water collected on a cold days, become ice, like a ice skating rink. So just in, in the, you know, as you go along, I know not gonna be done soon, but when time come to sand the streets and stuff, please pay attention to that. And because some of the, the people that live there and travel through, go to the Dunkin' Donut or from there, cut back to Willie Street, they comment on that, and they skate and slide. So thank you.
We can also, yeah, we can also look at in the future, not right now, in the summertime, we can look at with wastewater to see if we, is the catch basin needed, called for at that location. If it's needed, we can add, we can add.
Are you all set, Counsel Yem?
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Counsel Scott, you have anything to add?
I'll say, thank you.
Counsel Ruck?
I think it's a man. This crash, it could probably be a good question for Counsel Mercier, since I know in the past, she's also brought up her streets forward to be accepted. But what's the criteria for a street actually to be accepted? You know, just looking at Chris Van Av, I mean, it's a connecting street, right, to two other ones. And I'm just not sure why, you know, I guess, you know, a dumb question would be, what makes a street accepted? And then why would some not be and some others would be?
A lot of times that when street, typically when street is built, they will petition to the city, assuming it's built to the city standard, and they will be draft of a city street acceptance plan, voted by city council, and that's how it got accepted. A lot of streets back in the day, either they did not build per city standard, or there's no meets and bounds around. So that will require hire a professional land surveyor to do right away search, to go through that process, and then come forward with the city council for acceptance.
You all set, Counsel Ruck?
Yeah, so, so take for example, Chris Van, right? It's, you know, up and down, there's line markings on it, no sidewalks. But so as, when that street was made, that they call was to Boston Street, it didn't follow the standards, the correct standards?
It could potentially not follow the standard. Depends on, it would go for the width of it, the pavement, the substructures. Those are all part of the requirements. And also, the other portion is the right-of-way piece of it will be a take, a big considerations when we do street acceptance.
So, Mr. Manager, through the manager, is it just a matter of someone making a motion to accept a street?
Mr. Manager?
We, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We would accept any and all streets, but each street that's not accepted, and I want to make sure I'm saying this correctly, the meets and the bounds, it may very well be interfering with someone else's land. It was done improperly in the beginning. So each, each street is very unique as to why it was or was not accepted.
Correct.
Prior to. And it could be meets and bounds issues. It could be the fact that it just wasn't built appropriately. Ms. Chang?
Correct, that's correct.
So we would inherit, we're probably gonna inherit the liability anyhow. But it's not, it's not an easy thing just to say, "We accept it." We would actually have to send folks out to do that.
Survey, to do, we will have to do a title search. We'll do de-research. We'll do the street layout.
Right. Potentially pay somebody for compensation if it was a piece of land, if, and I say if. And it's every single street is gonna be different. It would just be an opportunity to have one of our engineers take all of these streets, one by one, and that would be the, it's a project.
And that's a total out of the blue question. So the more acceptable streets we have, we eligible for more state grants and federal monies as well?
And some, that would be correct, Counselor. And sometimes the, the cost may very well
The cost is very hefty in order, we have, engineering department has done all the streets that low hanging fruit that able to accept. We have accept all those already. The other ones that is not accepted right now will require some work to get it to there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Getchia?
Through you to answer. Counsel Ruck's question is, Chapter 90 funds have certain regulations that they have to meet to get the funding. And the reason why they're put there is for legality reasons. There's legal reasons between drainage, the separation of the road. There's a lot of issues there. So no city or town, and it's been gone over and over with, would accept any road without it meeting Chapter 90 funding sources coming back. So. So while we, they pay the same taxes as everybody else, and it's not justified, but that's the way the state sees it. So that's why it would be unacceptable. It just doesn't meet the state Chapter 90 fund payback. So it would be a legal issue if you did that.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. On the list, I just had a question. What were we saying, what are we going to do with Western Ave again?
Western Ave is paving.
But no sidewalk?
No sidewalk.
I know, I know it's more money, but that doesn't make any sense. Because if we just, there's no correct water flow over there. I mean, we have businesses there and, you know, we've been fighting for this for three, four, five years. I mean, we have to do that project right and do it once, and that's it. I mean, it needs a sidewalk for everybody to walk to the businesses. There's businesses on the left side, all automotive places. It just doesn't make any sense, Mr. Mayor, to not do the sidewalk. We, we need to do that whole road correctly. I mean, that would be my suggestion. If we're just wasting our money if we're just going to pave over that and have the curbs not the right height and not have the correct sidewalk. So, and then my other question was just, I didn't see Garden Road on here. I thought Garden Road was pretty bad, no?
Garden Road is pretty bad, yes. That area is within that Wentworth and Douglas area. The flooding issues. We're waiting for that wastewater project of the sewer separations to have more defined limits, to see where that limit line. We don't want, what we don't want is to have paved the road and then the sewer separation project came through and then dig it all up again. That's why these streets is very carefully selected. We look through the CSO project, we look through gas line, we look through their RSR, we look through their CBV and sidewalk conditions, all those are taken into considerations. Hopefully by next years, we will have a more clear pictures on the CSO project. As you are aware of, we're all aware of, it's a huge project. It's taking a lot of area within the city. So we have kind of pick the street that's stay outside of those area for now.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comment on this motion response? The, here now, the next one is the last motion response is on update boards and commissions. Any comments, Councilor Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to through you, Mr. Mayor, to the managers, thank you, Mr. Managers, and particularly the DEI officers, Ms. Dominguez, very comprehensive. But also, same time, it's very, to see that 34 vacancies on this list. I also like to maybe a report back to the council on, and maybe a more updated report as to, you know, you know, can, can, can the, the DEI officers, Ms. Dominguez, provide in term of membership analysis of board and commission to see the gap in term of representation? And also, if it possible, is this, is this already on the city website, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to Communications?
Not at this time, councilor.
All right, so, so maybe put this on the city website as well as, I would suggest as well that I know the city has a number of city task force. The OPF task force is one of them. So I also want, also an update on it as well in term of where we at on the OPF task force, when, when, when they're going to resume the meeting again. So if we add also all the city task force on to the website and have member also in it, also will be a great idea to have it on so that, you know, people who want to, to see what all the task force in the city and who's representing this task force as well as the makeup of the, the gap in term of representation on this board and commission. The other questions are maybe also asking to manage, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, in term of the associate board, can, is it possible to maybe add associate board to all of the board and commission in the city? The one that you can do it by law? That, that would also be a good things as well. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much for that opportunity to speak on this, councilor. This is a good opportunity as well that people will see that we do have vacancies in, in any number of boards. The, the folks with, the executive director, DeRozas has been doing a good job, as well as our DEI officer has been doing a great job. But as you're looking through and you see some of the vacancies and some of the people that quote unquote have fallen off, what happens is we reach out to people and we ask them if they would like to re-up for another term. And a lot of times people will say no, or they'll say yes. But if the councilors have the opportunity to look at this, it'd be a great opportunity to reach out to folks, to actively engage and get involved. We put things out and sometimes in different areas, we receive many. You know, hunger homeless, for instance, we're, we're really starting to refill that. And then in other situations, we don't really receive many. So I'd like to take the opportunity as people are looking at this at home, if that they're interested in serving on anything from, you know, the Monument Committee or the Planning Board or, you know, Sustainability Council, to please make sure you contact us. We really do try to take the, accept everybody and try to find out how they can give back to our community. So I, once again, I do think that Ms. Minicas and Ms. DeRozas have been doing a great job filling this in, but we still need some help and trying to, trying to finish it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, if you could take off Dr. Boyd's name on the, the, the school committee, the low high school committee, so to speak. I think he's still on it, he's no longer with us.
Just like Lillian Hartman.
That would be.
Councilor Gitchia, do you have your hands up?
Replaced with the current superintendent who's been voting in that matter. Thank you, councilor.
Councilor Gitchia?
Through you to the manager, Manager Golden, the water board. I don't, are we still doing abatements? Or how do we go about that with nobody on them? Because then.
Mr. Manager?
That the, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. The water abatements would be done by Mr. DeChains. That's another similar situation to Mr. Dr. Boyd leaving, and we just haven't changed the names over.
Yeah, I think though, in the ordinances, and I don't have it in front of me, you need a three-member panel to do an abatement. You can't just have one person who's in charge of that utility do that. But that's something you might just want to look into, that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Janes, did you have your hands up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the manager, first, I appreciate the report. I think it's, it's good to keep tabs and understand where we are as we work towards this. You mentioned, you know, putting the word out there and trying to get folks to come and apply. I think we got to do a little more than that on this. I think we really need to actively recruit and engage the community. I would like to see if, if it's possible to put together, you know, just some quick one-pagers, like, hey, this is the Pollard Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Here's what they do, here's what we're looking for. Things that we could bring to neighborhood meetings, community events, and other places where there are folks who are already engaged in the community who may be looking to contribute more. Well, I think a lot of folks in the, in the community don't know that these opportunities to give back are out there. The senior center might be another place where we could engage some folks and find some folks who maybe are retired and have a little more time and are looking for things to do. I think there's a lot of opportunities around the community to bring these opportunities to the community rather than waiting for people to come in the door. So I'd like to see if we could get a little creative with that and try to, you know, draw up some, some handouts or something that we can bring. And if we can make sure that those are available in various languages, that might be helpful as well, as a way to, way to push, you know, engagement in this kind of thing. So I appreciate that, and it's just some suggestions, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, that's a great idea. I want to make sure that we are putting that out in different languages as well. But I do know that Ms. Marquez that works in my office brings forward to all the neighborhood groups and asks. I want to make sure that that's, that's happening every month, I'll double check. And I do know that sometimes the neighborhood groups overlap. So sometimes we're chasing around the city. But as far as neighborhood groups, senior center is probably a good point. But if any of the councilors has another thought or, or anything, I guess what I'm putting out to all of the council is, we all have vast networks of people and we have plenty of vacancies looking for some assistance, so. But if I could ask Ms. DeRozas to make sure that we, we do have that in multiple languages, because I do know we put it out on Facebook when we have that opportunity, and I know that ACHOP puts it out as well. So I would appreciate any help on that. Thank you, councilors.
You all set, Councilor Janes? If no other comments or questions, that complete the communication for the city manager. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Drinkwater, second by Council Leahy, on favor, say I, opposed, say no, the ice habit, motions carry. The next line items is 6.2, communication, resignations of various members from low cultural council.
May I bundle 7.1 to 7.5, please?
It's an excellent idea. Let me just finish the 6.2. Need a motion to place on file by Council Rook, second by Council Nune, on favor, say I, opposed, say no, the ice habit, motion is carry. Motion by Council Yem to bundle 7.1 through 7.5.
Five.
Or six, 7.6, second.
7.5, please.
And what else?
Keep it up to 7.5, 7.1 and 7.5?
Yes, 7.1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
He's asking you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you move it to 7.5, please? I, I can't vote on one of the, one of the votes, that's why.
You want to leave 7.5 out?
7.6.
7.6.
Please.
Okay, just bundle 7.1 through 7.5.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Second by Council Rook. I will read this vote individually. And if you want to speak on it, you can bring them up, mention item, then we go from there. 7.1, vote, accept gift of 2,000 from Digital Credit Union. 7.2, vote, accept, expend $180,025 fiscal year 2024. Staffing grant LPD. 7.3, vote, accept, expend $47,099. FY24, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. And the last one, actually, 7.4, vote, accept, expend $474,088. FR Kara Grant. 7.5, vote, accept, expend $5,000, Mass. State Police Grant LPD. Need a motion to adopt by Council Rook, second by Council Nune. Any comments or questions on this item? Council Mercy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 7.1, we talked about DCU Credit Union giving the city $2,000. We will be sending them a thank you somewhere, thank you so much. And that's what partnership is all about. We just had something at the senior center. An enterprise bank gave us $500 as part of the raffle. Here we are tonight with $2,000 from DCU. This is so great, we're so grateful to get these gifts to help the city in whatever way they can, and this is a perfect way to do it. Also, I, I just want to talk about LPD. We're going to get Municipal Public Safety Staffing Award. This is unbelievable, $180,000. This is going to help LPD, the Low Police Department, to deploy additional foot and bicycle patrols. That is unbelievable. So when you look, I know we bundle them and we have a chance to talk about them. I just had to put my two cents in about those two. Thank you so much.
Councilor, any other comments or questions? Here now, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janes?
Yes.
It's 11 years.
The next items, a vote in 7.6. And this is a vote to approve exemptions of Haley Rook, MGL, C268A, S20. I think was the, the work that should have gave me the clue, right, councilor? Did a motion to, read it by title, councilor, Mr. Clerk? Can't find my glasses. All right. Vote approving the exemption of Haley Rook from the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 268A, Section 20. Motion adopt by Council Gitchia, second by Council Janes. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook? Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janes?
Yes.
11 years.
The next item is 8.1, order 60-day trial with reading, second reading by title. City Council order, assuming the Chapter 266 of the Code of Order, City Law, Massachusetts, considering 6, Sections 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations, hereby confirmed for period up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt by Council.
Yeah, I have, I have a concern here. This is an order, this is, there's, there's a section under the order that says handicap parking space removal per resident request, and there's two of them. But tonight on the agenda, there's a third one at 33 Jordan Street under miscellaneous. Is it too late to put that one in under the 60-day trial? I don't know the answer, but.
Mr. Manager?
Is she?
If I may.
Mr. Clerk?
It's a current petition now, councilor. It's got to get referred up to the transportation engineer. She'll make the cause and make the decision and have to bring it back down.
Oh, so it won't go under this order?
No, you're talking to one of the petition tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got to go through a process because sometimes, I think the transportation engineer goes out and talks to the neighbors to make sure that.
All right, well, it's as simple as removing a handicap parking sign that nobody is there anymore. But anyway, I just thought I'd try, thank you, nice try.
Need a motion to.
It was a nice try.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt by Council Scott, second by Council Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rook?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Gitchia?
Yes.
Council Janes?
Yes.
11 years.
Next is the ordinance from the city manager, 9.1, ordinance amend Chapter 9 by creating diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging committee. Do we have any questions or comments on this one? Here none, need a motion to refer to public hearing on January 9, 2024, at 7:00 PM by Council Gitchia, second by Council Leahy, on favor, say I, opposed, say no, the ice habit, motions carry. There's no, Mr. Clerk, there's no subcommittee report, is that correct?
No.
The next item is petition, 11.1, miscellaneous, will Nunean request permission to address council regarding visitor parking passes? Do we have the petitioner here?
I'm not sure, Mr. Nunean? It's not.
We do not have the maker of the petition here. We will put it on for the.
No, no, refer it, Mr..
Just need a motion to refer to transportation engineer, parking department for report and recommendation by Council Yem, second by Council Janes, on favor, say I, opposed, say no, the ice habit, motions carry. 11.2, miscellaneous, Devon Kennison, Codo Asian Fusion Law, request installation of overhanging sign located at 76 Merrimack Street. No comments or questions, motion to refer to law department.
I'm not sure if the petitioner is here.
Is the petitioner here?
Nope, just refer it.
Right, refer to law department for report and recommendation by Council Mercy, second by Council Gitchia, on favor, say I, opposed, say no, the ice habit, motions carry. Last item on the agenda, 11.3, miscellaneous, Andrea De Angelis, request removal of handicap parking sign at 133 Jordan Street. We don't have a speaker here, if no comments or question, motion to refer to transportation engineer for report and recommendation by. motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for report and recommendation by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Mercier, on favor, say I oppose, say not I have it, motions carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Mercier?
I, I just have a question because I don't remember if this took place, but I believe that the planning form of government states that we get sworn in on the very first Monday of the new year, and if that falls on a New Year's Day, it's the very next day. But did this council ever take a vote to do that? Because I don't recall if we took a vote to do that. You can't just say that. You have to take a vote to do that, Mr. City Clerk. Did we do that? Because I don't remember that we...
I think there might be, in those rules, I might say that it came on on Monday. It only happened one prior time when it went automatically to that following day. If the body wishes to take a vote on that, I'm likely to, we could do that. I don't think it's necessary, but if you want to take a roll call, we can.
I thought we did. It doesn't happen all the time, but I do remember when it did and we did take a vote.
Counsel Mercier, you want to make a motion on the floor?
Yes, to take a vote to have the swearing in on the 2nd, which is January 2nd on a Tuesday.
Second by Counsel Leahy.
Mr. Mayor, beforehand, I think you have to suspend, I think you have to suspend the rules to do it because it wasn't on the agenda.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion to suspend the rule by Counsel Getchier, second by Counsel Drinkwater, to take out a motion by Counsel Mercier, second by Counsel Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
For the last roll call, Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Thank God, because the program's already went out.
Just a quick, a quick housekeeping before we have a special order of business. The evaluation has been sent out for the city manager, the clerk, and the auditor. If you can complete that and send that to Human Resource as soon as possible, that'd be great. Next, that I want to take a few minutes of your time. I know that we really tried to push this meeting up to 10 o'clock as close as possible, because that was the good old days. All the meeting went up to 10 o'clock or later, and that was a lot of fun. And I can see this happened tonight, that we really did work hard to make sure this last meeting lasts as long as possible. Tonight, I really want to say thank you to Counsel Drinkwater, who came on the council along with me. We did not know each other back then through working together in 2020. Both now voted the council knew the politics and tried to get a grasp of what's going on in the city as fast as possible. And I have to say, I'm very impressed with Counsel Drinkwater. And in the past four years, you have done a tremendous job for the constituents across the city. You're a great counselor with your colleagues. I don't think too many counselors on, in the chamber that I think I agree with and disagree with almost equally, 50/50. But also, one of the few counselors that I spoke with the most too, on the telephone. And I just want to thank you for your service to the entire city. I wish you the best of luck in your next endeavor, which you already do already anyway. But again, on behalf of the entire city council and the city, we thank you. Any other comments or questions? Maybe not questions, Counsel, but comments and compliments. Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo similar sentiment that I came on board. I was privileged and honored to serve as the chair of Housing Subcommittee. Counselor Drinkwater was a member, and then he's the chair of the zoning subcommittee that I also was part of as a member as well. And we did some housing and zoning jointly, and I'm very impressed. And I mentioned to Counselor Drinkwater and that I feel like I'm losing my right hand that when I learned that he is no longer seeking reelection. So, he's, Counselor Drinkwater is someone I look up to when I don't have a whole lot as a new counselor. So, through many time meetings together, I learned a lot from him. Very patient, intelligent, and have high integrity and get along with everyone, you know. Thank you for your service to the city, and I want to be able to call upon you and text you regarding both the housing and the zoning. Thank you, Counselor, for your service.
I see all the hands were up. The light's bug. We just go down the road. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say, well, I love that we're going to have another John Dee in your seat. You will definitely be missed. You have always been a voice of reason. Even when we're on different sides of issues, you're always so respectful. You always come at everything just such an intelligent and thoughtful way. I really will miss that. I also hope that I can reach out to you because you definitely have been like a mentor, I think, to many people on this council. And I do think we discussed this, leaving for the reasons that you're leaving to spend time with your children. You will never regret that. There's nothing more important than family, and I wish you all the luck in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start by saying, John, you're a good man. You know, you brought civility to the council, a deep knowledge of all issues, research, respect for the room. And, you know, when you spoke, it meant something because you could tell that, you know, you were coming from a place of your deep beliefs to make the city better. I thank you for your service. The only negative thing I'll say about you is, if you got a phone call from, from John on a Tuesday, it was to tell you that he did not support your motion. But, yeah, again, it was done very respectfully, and the reasons why he was shooting you down. But, that being said, I wish you all the best of luck. I hope you don't go away. I'm sure you'll be around to assist others and to keep the city moving in a direction that you see fit, and look forward to your next move. So, thank you, Counselor.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, John. Thanks for everything, everything that you do for the city. Thank you for your friendship, leadership, and your passion for the city. You will be greatly missed, but then again, you're not that far away. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel Mercier?
Oh, thank you very much. I just wanted to say, John, thank you for your service to the city. A very quiet giant in that I mean, you really, when you didn't speak all that much, but when you did, it made a tremendous impact, and I respect everything that you had to say. You were rather quiet, but a real true gentleman, and I admire the fact that you want to spend time with your children. That's why I didn't get into this till my children were old enough to be on their own. So, I do admire your, you know, your thoughts to be with your children. Thank you very much, and we will miss you. I think that I've always felt that when you spoke, you spoke on a higher level, like a state area, like you, you knew the laws of the state more than the city, you know. I don't mean it in disrespect, but I could always hear your higher aspirations in the way that you spoke. So, I wish you the best of luck. You're a true gentleman. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Counsel McDreamy, I just want to say, we've never heard that until you got elected, so. But again, you know, as everyone said, I don't know, you come in, you read your notes Tuesday night, you're never prepared. But we really learned a lot from you, and we appreciate the time that you put into the council. And you had a lot to add over the last terms here, and we appreciate it. And I'm sure you'll be back in, in years to come. So, this doesn't seem like it's the end of it for you, but appreciate everything that you put into this council in the city. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, thank you so much for your contributions to this city and for being a friend. I've really appreciated working with you these past two years. I've learned a lot from you. I really appreciate whenever we have a discussion on the floor, even if I'm exactly in alignment with you, you always have a way of saying what I wanted to say, but not forgetting something like I would, saying it better than I would. And at the end, I go, yep, I should have just let John speak for me. So, I'm going to miss that. I also really appreciated the way that you would not be shy about keeping the rest of us in check when we needed it. On more than one occasion, there have been things that have started going off the rails, and when it gets to your turn to speak, you have an excellent way of re-centering and refocusing on the issue in a way that is never personal, in a way that is never attacking anyone, and really does great service to this chamber and that seat. And so, I really appreciated that ability that you displayed. And I want you to not be shy, and feel free to come down and take that podium and, you know, smack us around if we need it over the next two years. Because once again, I just really appreciated working with you, and I'm still going to call you and pick your brain. You're not getting away from that. But all the best to you and Julie and the kids, and whenever you want to step up and run for something again, let me know, because I'll be there to help. Thank you.
Counsel Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. For the last two years, I've had the pleasure to sit next to John. I don't know what anybody down here is talking about, about disagreements, but John and I were always on the same page. We're like the odd couple. But, no, seriously, John, it's been really a pleasure. And I've said it to you over and over again, don't go far. Take care of your family. And you're a person who I knew was smart because you graduated from Great Lowell. So, I mean, not Great Lowell, I'm sorry, UMass Lowell. And I just think that he brings a different presence to every meeting, and you don't see a lot of things off the camera when you're at these meetings. And I can always lean into John and say, John, what do you think? And he always has great advice, and I'm going to miss that going forward. And please don't be a stranger. You know my number. I know your number, so don't hang up on me. Answer the phone. Thanks, John.
Any, before I ask John to speak, any other one who also wants to speak? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel on behalf, Counsel Drinkwater, on behalf of the administration, I want to say thank you. Thank you very much. You were thoughtful, knowledgeable, and most of all, always respectful, always building people up and never, never tearing them down. The department heads really enjoyed interacting with you, John. And quite frankly, it's been brought up here tonight, your eloquence is always to be admired. But we want to say thank you to Julie and your three children very much. I don't know if Julie will ever forgive me, but I think that the day you were, found out you were elected, I was standing next to you, and Julie was out of the picture in the Lowell sun or close by. But it's been a lot of fun, and now I have to attribute this to Counsel Mercier as well. My father would always say, the greatest compliment you can give anybody is to call him a true, a true gentleman. So, John, you are a true gentleman, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you very much for your service.
Anybody else who would like to make a comment? And before I call on you to speak, Counsel Drinkwater, on behalf of the manager's office and entire city council, we frame this council team, the best team ever for you, so you can remember all of us. Counsel Drinkwater, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know that I can quite articulate what it meant to hear those kind words from a group of people that I respect so much and have enjoyed serving with so much. So, first, I want to thank, thank all of you for those, for those very kind words. It really means a lot. For the past four years, it's been a true honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Lowell. And first and foremost, I want to thank the voters for their confidence in me to send me here and allow me to do this job. And all the voters, and all who participate in, in this city's democracy. I truly appreciate those who vote, those who tune in, those who reach out. We really couldn't do this job without the, the input of all the residents. I, I really mean it when I say I've learned so much over the past four years from, from serving with, with each and every one of you. Every one of the colleagues that I've had the opportunity to work with, whether it's on this council or on the past council, has brought something to this job, an area of expertise, some of their experience that has just added so much to this council. And the mayor, I believe, just referred to the council as a team, and I think that, that's accurate. Because every, every member here, every member of the team brought something that added something to the residents of Lowell. And it's been just such a, such a pleasure to serve with a group that brings so many, so many ideas, so much dedication, so much passion for the city. And as has been alluded to here tonight, even when there's been disagreements here, I think it's, we all come from a place of good faith and a place of trying to do the right thing for the city. There's never going to be unanimity in the right or the perfect way to move forward. But over the course of the past several years, I have always felt that where there have been disagreements, they have always been respectful. And each and every person comes to this job, comes to these desks from a place of good faith, and just trying to do what they think is right for the city, what they think is right for the residents. Nobody's, nobody's here for selfish reasons. And, and I truly have learned that what it takes to do this job, and I have such respect for those who have been doing it for, for longer than I have, because it takes true commitment. And that is one thing I just want to express to the, to the residents at home. And I, and I think they know this, but it, it really just does take a tremendous amount of time and often times sacrifice to perform this work. And I just have such, such respect for each and one of, every one of my colleagues for, for doing that and doing that with such passion and knowledge and working on behalf of the residents. It's also been a pleasure working with the city manager, Manager Golden, and your team. Truly, every time I've had to reach out with an issue, it's been just extremely responsive. And each and every member of your team that I've had the pleasure of working with, you know, has just, again, cares about the city, is here to make, make life better for residents. And it's been a, been a real honor and a privilege to work with you and your team. Aside from, there's also a lot of members of the city staff that I may not have had a chance to work with personally, but I think there's unbelievable work that goes on at all levels of, of city government. And to see it from... And to see it from this chair, and just seeing what goes on, I really hope that the residents of Lowell appreciate the work that goes on behind the scenes in each and every department, in each and every level, to make this city run. Running a city is not an easy thing to do, and it takes a lot of individuals, a lot of teamwork, from the top on down. And I just have such respect and admiration for each and every one of our public employees who make this a great place to live. Also had the opportunity to learn more about so many community organizations, nonprofits, a lot of people who may not get the recognition, the wonderful recognition that I was just privileged to sit here and receive. And as elected officials, we all, from time to time, get that. I've often heard it referred to as it can be a thankless job, and I understand that, but it also can be a job where you go to events, you get thanked, you get recognized. There are a lot of people in this community, particularly those who work for community organizations, nonprofits, that also help the residents of the city, who don't always get that kind of recognition. And I do appreciate that through this council, we have had many people come through and get the recognition for what they do behind the scenes, but there are many, many more who I see helping our constituents, and improving the quality of their lives in our nonprofit sector. And they don't get recognized enough. I didn't script anything, and I'm hoping I don't leave anyone out, but I want to make sure that I extend gratitude to my family for supporting me in doing this work, and allowing me to do this work. There's a lot of sacrifice that has been made behind the scenes by members of my family. Tuesdays are particularly hectic, we're always running around. I'm sure people have seen me in a tie at sporting events, you know, heading out a little bit early, and you know, there's people who have given my kids a ride home after. But certainly, to my wife Julie, it's certainly none of this would be possible without her support, and everything that she does behind the scenes at home. And you know, for my kids, it's actually been really wonderful over the past few years to see them as they grow up and have more of an understanding of what this is, to see them gain an interest in that. And one thing I hope that they take away from this is to understand the importance of city government, and hopefully that they will become civically engaged and active participants in the city's democracy. But I know that they've had to make sacrifices as well, so to Addie, Sean, and Riley, I appreciate you allowing me to do this, and it will be nice to be able to spend a little bit more time, particularly on the Tuesday nights, with the family. So again, I just want to say that it has been a real privilege and honor, and again, to each and every person that I've had the opportunity to serve with, it has been a real honor. I feel that the city is in great hands moving forward between this administration, this council, and that includes Council-elect Dakota, who will be a new member of this council in the next year, and I know brings a great experience as well to this council that'll be invaluable, I think, to residents, and have great confidence that this council will do great things for the city in the years moving forward. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you.
Counselor Drinkwater, you will continue to receive birthday card from this body on your birthday.
Thank you, Counselor. I can finally relax, knowing that, I know you know what is coming up.
Thank you, Counselor. We also have reached the moment of truth for myself as the mayor of the city as well. One of the privilege of being mayor is that you get to lead meetings, and you don't have to say much. But when you do have something to say, most of the time, the time have expired, so you're forced to not have much to say either, but sometimes that'd be a good thing. Before we close this meeting for the rest of the year, I do would like to say a small thank you to everyone. But before I do so, I would not have done a good of a job up here without my right-hand person, the clerk, Michael Gary. And I have to be a little bit cautious, I'd rather have him speak first, because it gives me some time to respond what kind of things he's gonna say to me, being my right-hand persons. Listen, he listens to everybody just as closely as I do, and watch out for me, as well as previous mayors as well, to make sure that we run a good meeting. Before I say something, I ask Mr. Clerk to please say something first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recognize Counselor Drinkwater for your interaction with my office and myself during the years. It's been nothing but professional and extremely friendly. It's been a joy, and it's been a pleasure serving for you. In regards to the mayor, on behalf of the administration, we just have a little recognition for you, Mr. Mayor, for your stewardship throughout the years, and your guidance throughout the last term as the mayor. I've been here for a little bit in councils before, you know, prior councils, the waters get choppy sometimes. Councils after this, the waters will get choppy sometimes. Your stewardship during those times is important, it's recognized, and it's vital to the city. So on behalf of the administration, I'd just like to present you with this little token of our appreciation, sir.
I'm just, it's noise opening this, I'm just gonna share this with the city. Comes in a very nice box. And what do you know? The gavel that I will bring home with me, but believe me, this is not to be used at home.[1044.36][1044.36](LAUGHING) Yeah, not me. Only have as much authority as the people give to me. Yeah, thank you for that.
If I may, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recognize the vice chair of the body as well. I think, I don't, people don't realize, I think, so much out there, how much time and dedication you put to this job. You have families, you have other jobs, and I think people should recognize that. It is a huge commitment, and sometimes you can't always make it. So the vice chair steps in sometimes for the mayor, and again, we never missed a beat with Vice Chair Gitchia. His stewardship during those choppy times were relevant and important, and I'd like to, as a part of the administration, I'd like to present him with a little token of our appreciation as well.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Over the last two years, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I'm not your right-hand person, Erastis is. You know, every time you had left, I just called Erastis. He had everything dialed in for me, ready to go, and I can't thank you enough, Erastis, for all your hard work, your dedication, always answering the phone when I was pressing the panic button. Erastis, do we have this thing? I don't know what I'm gonna say, and you always came up with something great. And thank you for everything you did, Mayor Chow, for our city. Clerk Gary, thank you for answering the phone. I caused most of those choppy waters for you, I'm sure. And thank you to the rest of the council, you guys have been, it's been a pleasure. You know, and it truly is a team. We disagree, we agree to disagree, but every one of you have really been professional to me, and Manager Golden, and your staff. You guys were great. Whenever we had a flag raising or something, you always called, is there anything you need, is there anybody to help? And you know, Assistant City Manager Machado, the same thing. Thank you for taking every one of my crazy texts to you at 2:00 in the morning, or wherever I send them over, and just send them back, we'll get it, we'll get it. And everyone else, thank you for everything you do for our city. It really does, we are improving, and we are making it a much better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You made that noise when you pulled out the box, too.[1226.01][1226.01](LAUGHING) I wanna see if...
You have the package.
No, no.[1237.01][1237.01](LAUGHING) Great, great packaging. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Gitchia. I also want to say thank you. I'm very honored to have you as the vice mayor. We came on to the city council to make sure that we serve our residents, serve our constituents throughout the city. And again, more often than not, when you disagree on a topic, it's not that we don't have the best of the interests of the city at heart, it's because we do, and we want to challenge ourselves and our colleagues to make sure that we do the best. And that's because of that, I'd like to, you know, this is not goodbye, not for Counselor Gitchia, or not for me, we are continuing to serve. But at this time, this is my last opportunity to speak as the mayor, and if there's no objection from my colleagues, I would like to make my speech from up here, if that's okay. I wrote a whole things to say, but I think over the course of many, many meetings, what you say is not as important as what we have done together as a council. And I believe that the entire city have seen that, and that's because we all believe that all politics is local. I am more inclined to understand and follow this dodge more than people know. And I think that the reason why is I came from a village in Cambodia, literally a village, but all, you know, the village doesn't go as cool or smooth as all politics local. Local in the United States is larger than a village in my town. But what it really means is that whether you are village leader or a mayor of this great city, it's the people, the assets, the resources, the partners, and the colleagues right here before me, that are really the hearts and the soul of the matter, which drives us in our duties as elected official. So tonight, I just want to take a short moment to say thank you to every one of you here, to the entire city council for having me to serve you as your mayor. The councilors, one by one, I know all of you work your heart out, days and night, the weekends, as many councilors I mentioned before, a lot of sacrifices to make sure we carry the duties and our responsibilities to the city get done. I can't thank enough the city manager, Tom Golden, you for responding to every single calls, every single text, every single email, not only me, and I feel that I'm speaking here tonight as the mayor, and also on behalf of the council here. You respond to everyone without prejudice. You get it, you don't ask questions, just, well, maybe questions, how do you want to get it done, what's the best way? And then you talk to your staff, your professionals, make it done the right way, from Sean Machado, Counselor here tonight, Austin, of course, the clerk right here, I speak to him all the time, about the meeting, everything else about the city, from Kelly to the solicitor, Corey, Yuvani, thank you so much, the communication director, Melissa, for all you do, and also the people that you don't see here, the city employees, whether they work at City Hall, at Lowell Police Department, Lowell Fire Department, DPW, less well-known, at the wastewater management, every department you can think of, they do a great job. The reason, I would say, the councilors, myself, the mayor, I learned from day one, former mayor, Rita Mercier, mentioned to me, we are only as good as our employees, as the city resources, as the city department, the city manager. And that's, I've seen that, I watch that, observe that, we are only as good as the city staff. People always advise me not to mention people's names when I make these thank you messages. For obvious reason, I'm gonna leave probably some of the most important people, a lot of people I see every day, but there are some partners in the community that really came through for me to make sure that we make our city, we work well, our city look good, not only to the residents, but to the entire state, and I would have to say maybe the entire world. I want to give a special thank you to Jay Lennahan and Howard Amadon from Greater Lowell Community Foundation, Phil Sessin, President of Mass Ex-Community College, Chancellor Julie Chen from UMass Lowell. We have many other great partners as well, that really encouraged me to help them with what they already been doing to serve the community. CTI, which does, every mayor has done the end youth homelessness, and the mayor's role is just to help them raise the money, raise awareness and so forth, and was happy, along with CTI, we raised $50,000. That's a record, to have an youth homelessness program. The Salvation Army, one year, along with Counselor Rook, who was chairman, was co-chair to help raise the money for Salvation Army. Strong Water Farm in Tewksbury, that does a lot of rehabilitation for wounded soldiers, as well as young people in the other leagues, we helped raise over $100,000 for Strong Water Farm. And of course, the Sunshine Fund Charities, which made the councilors come to support this past weekend, and over the past four years, four years combined, we raised about $70,000, and thousands, thousands of toys we collected, and hundreds, and hundreds, and thousands of happy children receiving toys, and family receiving holiday meals. The Mayor Macropetor Theater, which instituted the first Asian playwright in the city, if not the state, to encourage Asian to be involved in performing arts. And of course, every year, we have the Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra that perform the holiday open house, and they have done a tremendous job holding concerts all over the city, inviting different speakers, different programs, different culture to participate in their concert. And right now, I would like to ask my assistant, Erastis Wongi, Erastis, please come to the podium and take a bow, my friend.[1641.01][1641.01](APPLAUSE) When I first hired Erastis, I talked to Erastis, are you ready? We're gonna make history together. It's not about me, it's about us, you and me. First Kenyan-American in Lowell to be the mayor's assistant, along with myself, being the first Cambodian-American to be the mayor of the city, and I think we just light up that path. And Erastis never asked questions, never say no, always looking for a way to make it happen. I want to thank you for your commitment, your unwavering dedication, and you and I know that action speaks louder than words. I think with that said, maybe I will ask you to say a couple words, just to finish off the story. Erastis, go ahead.
Well, I don't know where to start, but I just want to say thank you. It's been an honor to serve all of you. For the last two years, I've really learned a lot, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity, and for believing in me to carry on, to be able to achieve your goal and vision.
Excellent job, Erastis, as always. I want to thank my closest friends out there who are watching tonight, I'm not gonna mention names, this is probably more out of selfishness, I don't want people to reach out to seek their counsel and their wisdom, that might not, I might not look as intelligent or as smart as other people, but I thank my closest friends who really counsel me on a daily basis, literally, I'm not making that up. I can't even begin to name many, many other individuals and leaders throughout the city that helped me along the way. And I've said to people all the time, and I truly mean this, I'm very lucky, very fortunate to be the mayor in this city. I do not think it could happen in another city or town in this country. And what fortunate about my mayorship also, a lot of people around me want me to be successful, and that is really key. I could not have been this successful without the help of all of you, with my friends, with many leaders and colleagues out there that call me all the time, they could call to scold They could call to scold at me, but they do it in a funny way, so I have to laugh, sometimes serious. Just a lot of guidance from many, many successful people in the city, and I want to thank everyone and each of them. One more person that we'll talk about, make it fun, Mr. Leo Sheldon, from day one of having a party, he played the guitar. I love music, my son play music. So just people like that, individuals like that, that you don't see, don't have any fancy title, but they make everything special for me as being the mayor. Everyone here recognize, know about the sacrifices that your family make, as what Vice Mayor mentioned earlier, Council of Drinkwater mentioned earlier. I would not have done this, I could not have done this without the support and the sacrifice of my wife, Simone Ratana-Yong. I believe that people vote for me, but that they were happy to have my wife as the mayor, as the city councilor, so we get two for the price of one. My two sons, they grew up as a young adults, from a young teenager, from pre-teens to adult during my political career in the short four or six-year spans. They're amazing kids, they make sacrifices, they didn't get to see me as much, and didn't get to see them as much, but they flourished the past few years. Thank my wife for all that. Without that said, you know, this is a happy sadness, as we all know. It's been an honor, it's been a privilege, and I cannot thank all of you enough, I cannot for voting for me, I cannot thank the public enough for all their support. Thank you so much to the city floor. God bless.